Thursday's at 5:30 normally.
That's that Moss Bluff map.
Like to call to order the regular police jury meeting, Thursday, June 5th, 2025. Please silence your phones and any blue slips. If you'd like to speak on any item on the agenda, please fill out a blue slip at the back table and bring it to Ms. Wallace here. Imocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Quinn, we've not heard from you tonight.
We'll start off with go Broncos.
Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, Lord, for the youth that we got to see today and excelling in their chosen sport and praising you and everything they do. Now, we thank you so much for choosing us to lead your people and to be their government. We thank you so much for allowing us to make decisions on your behalf for the betterment of your people. We pray for those that are still deployed, play for our firefighters, our MTS, our first responders, and anyone in harm's way on our behalf. I pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of life of the United States of America, and the two liberal love of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Broncos.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, did you say youths?
Yeah. What's a youth?
A what? All right, moving right along, we're gonna have a public hearing at 5:45, so we will come back to that.
Um, Mr. President, may I call Roll Berry?
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Burley is out of town, Ms. Eason.
Here.
Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Hayes is out of town, Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly is ill, President Barris.
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will move to item 2A. Appearance by Mr. Scott Walker, President and CEO of Southwest Louisiana Economic Development Alliance, Mr. Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Before Scott gets into his presentation, I just kinda wanna let everyone know that I had the opportunity, probably three or four occasions, to meet with Mr. Walker. I actually had several opportunities to meet his wife Jill, and we've had some great discussion. He has some great visions for our parish, very optimistic about the future. I just wanna point out, his first day on the job was February 10th, I believe, and that was also his introduction into Mardi Gras season. So, he came down from Indiana, so it was a welcoming event for Scott and welcomed him to our community, too. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Dane. Thank you all for having me here. I've had a chance to meet a number of you, I've had a chance to meet the staff as well, and I'm excited about being here. And so, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about me and my professional experience, about the organization and what we're trying to build there, and the economic development landscape, and talk a little bit about how regional economic development organizations in their regions win in today's competitive environment. And so, I'll run through that. I was given three minutes, and so, I have a lot of slides, and so, this'll go quick. So, with that, first of all, thank you. Thank you for-
That was quick.
The support.
That was quick.
You're right, you're right. So, let me know if you have any questions. But I wanted to just start out by saying thank you for not only this opportunity to speak to you tonight, but the opportunity to come here with my wife and become part of this community in this region. Your support of our organization is critical for that, and I wanna really build this partnership and the collaboration with the police jury for the long-term success of not only Calcasieu Parish and all the cities that are here and the people that live here, but for our entire five parish regions. So, thank you for this opportunity. My wife and I are moving here, our kids are not coming with us, we have two adult children, so I couldn't increase our population by two more, we tried to get them to move. Our son is in Colorado in pharmacy school, and our daughter is in Indiana working her first adult job, she's a biological engineer working for a company in West Lafayette. And so, we couldn't get them to move, but we'll get them here soon enough to see what it's like here, for sure. My wife is an entrepreneur, and she'll will be bringing her business here, and so, we'll have a new business getting incorporated. She's already got her paperwork done with the state, and she's just waiting on maybe an address change coming up as we buy a house before she comes down here and gets her business registered with the parish. So, that's all happening. So, with that, I grew up in, just a little bit about me and my background, I grew up in Michigan, and I was in Flint, Michigan, when it went through some of the worst economic distress I've ever seen, right? In the early eighties, as I was entering high school, the unemployment lines were long, the unemployment rate was in 29, 30%, and it was a difficult and challenging time. My parents sent me to college, I was the first of their children to go to college and to graduate, and of course, I went into an engineering school, 'cause that's a lot of times what blue collar families did, right? They sent their kids, they knew what engineers were, and they said, "You should be an engineer." And so, I graduated from Kettering University with a manufacturing systems engineering degree. From there, I moved with that degree and working on that degree as a co-op, I lived in Miami, Florida, Chicago, Illinois, and the company that hired me out of, when I graduated, moved me to Nashville, Tennessee, and put me in a sales job. And so, in that role, I covered the southeast of the US. I saw companies in Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia, and North Carolina and Tennessee. I put 65,000 miles on a car at that timeframe, and I learned a lot about the South. I learned that I loved it, and I loved the hospitality and the people, and, but the company wanted me to move back to, actually, to Omanah, Iowa. I turned that opportunity down and moved to Detroit, Michigan, to my first love, which was automotives and cars. I was a car guy growing up, and so, I loved working in the automotive industry. There, my second love, my wife, and so, we got married in the Detroit area. And around that time, in 2004, we had, the economic crisis was looming, the companies in Detroit were struggling, and they were working to offshore all parts production for their supply. I called on General Motors, we closed four plants for the company I worked for, three in Michigan and one in Ontario, and moved production to Mexico and Brazil. At that time, an economic development job opened up, and I thought it'd be great to have the experience to sit on the other side of the table and keep investment in Michigan in the US. And so, I took that opportunity and did that work for 10 years in Midland, Michigan, which was the headquarters of Dow Chemical Company, but it also had about 10,000 acres of petro, of chemical manufacturing. That was their birthplace, and they continued manufacturing there. So, I learned a lot about the chemical industry and what drives that global industry, and then was recruited to Lafayette, Indiana, where Purdue University is, but also a cohort of great manufacturers, from Subaru to Caterpillar to Vannick, a chemical company making pharmaceutical ingredients, to a whole host of other companies. And so, it was a great experience for me, working with Purdue University, and 10 years later, last year, I was looking at my job and the work I was doing and felt I had accomplished a lot, and there was, it was time for someone to take over and build new challenges. And so, when this opportunity came up, I applied for it, and here I am. So, I'm excited to be here and the work that we have in front of us. We have great opportunities, obviously, with all of this investment that we can all see coming down the pipeline. The question is, how do we build on that so that the troughs aren't as deep, that we feel, in the economic cycles that are coming at us? And it starts, for me, with our organization, which is the Southwest Louisiana Chamber and Economic Development Alliance, and the work that we're doing there. So, with that, we've adopted, since I've been there, this vision, that we're an exceptional and dedicated team of professionals that work with coalition of businesses, industry, public entities, nonprofit organizations, to make Southwest Louisiana a better place to live and work. And really, that's what we're trying to drive throughout the organization, as we hire new staff and we build up to what we should be to serve all of you. The work that we've done, sort of organizational audits, staff evaluations, assessment of our program, scope of work as a chamber, and the board structure, are all things that are on the table right now for changes, to bring us up to maybe what will be today's standard and for the future of what we need. But probably more importantly is the economic development work. We had one person kinda working in economic development, we had an incubator that wasn't serving the programs that, that maybe it needed to, to help really drive innovation. And we, the external team, what I like to call the broader economic development team, which includes the police jury, the parishes, and all of the cities and ports, and everyone is a little fractured and not as cohesive as what it could be. And then, we lack really an economic development strategy for the region. And so, that's all the work that's ongoing right now. We'll adopt the entrepreneurial operating system, I can talk to you a lot about it, but it's great for smaller organizations to drive success by focusing on strategy and priorities. And so, what I really wanna get to is our economic development landscape and our competition. We're in a war for talent. Economists tell us that people are less likely to move today than they ever, than they have been in the past 50 years. And if you think about it, and what's happened past COVID, we feel that here. Louisiana has lost population, our region has lost population, and we're trying to build that back, but we're not where we used to be. Places are fiercely competitive. They're investing in themselves, they're working hard to figure this out. In our community, in Tippecanoe County, Indiana, that, those two cities and county had invested 1.5 billion over the five years between 2015 and 2020 in quality of life initiatives, from schools to new YMCA's, to new community centers, to new parks. People are, places are fiercely competitive to attract talent, because that is the war that we're in. So, what does regional economic success look like? Great talent attracts great companies, great companies go where great talent is, it's all underpinned by quality of life. Both groups look at that, they want high quality of life, 'cause companies know to get the talent they need to move, they have to have quality of life that they expect and demand, and people are looking, they can vote, and they can go anywhere, and it's a, the competition is at a higher level. That economic equation is rewritten by innovation, research, and development. So, what does it look like if a region is successful? The common factors that I've learned and studied is that winning regions are strategic, they have a long-term focus, they invest in themselves, they're organized for collaboration, they have a customer service focus, and they continuously improve. So, with that, if you're aware, the state of Louisiana just recently launched their economic development plan. I'm gonna read a couple of things from the executive summary. It's organized under five pillars. It's out on the internet, if you wanna see it. The first is ease of doing business, position Louisiana to compete and win by making it the easiest and best place to do business, high wage employment, attracting those industries that are, demand high talent and pay a high wage for that, that fits with us as a region as well. Thriving regions, creating thriving, thriving regions that work in alignment with the state, and so, that's part of their plan, and that matters for us. Asset industries, optimize Louisiana's asset industries for growth, innovation, and then a global impact, drive Louisiana's business ecosystem towards global impact. All of those fit here, right? Those are all things that we should be striving for. So, what they're asking us to do is create a strategic plan for our region. We don't have one yet, and this is, I'm not a good engineer if I don't show you a project plan. So, this is the project plan for our strategic plan. So, we're kicking that off, it's got kicked off in May. The consulting firm is Emergent Method, they are the state's agent and who the state has recommended, and so, we're using them, they're helping us pay for this plan, and stakeholder engagement starts at the end of June and in July, and that's where all of you and all of our businesses and our industry leaders and all of our stakeholders and the public in general will be able to participate over the next three months in that stakeholder engagement. And so, I look for all of your support as we set up those meetings and those focus groups for those conversations. Regions are investing in themselves first to get that investment later, and so, things like Port Wender, new road infrastructure, and all of the things that you do are critically important. Regions are investing in new schools, and they're making themselves better as they're building road networks, there's bike lanes, pedestrian lanes, so they're focusing on what it's like and the experience of the people that are there today and the people they're trying to attract. They're organized for collaboration, and so, they work really hard to work together. And so, that's one of the things that you'll see as the alliance, as one of the conveners in this region, will be working hard to build that economic development team structure that we're reporting out on projects, we're working together to land those projects, and we're competing against areas that maybe historically we haven't competed against because we're attracting attention from companies that maybe would never have looked at us before. And they have a customer service focus, like the state said, focusing on that ease to do business is really critically important for the economic development success that we all wanna achieve. And they continuously improve, right? So, that's my engineering background coming again, plan, do, check, act, right? So, continuously improve and continuously make ourselves better, never satisfied with good. And that's what regions have going for them, and that's our, that's what we hope to develop in our economic development strategic plan and our vision. And we are a region that can be successful over the long term, we've had great success we're building on, but we can't rest and we can't just accept the status quo. There. Mr. President.
Great job.
Thanks. I took, I took too much time.
That was great.
Yep.
No, I, I, we know, we know that, I mean, I've sensed from, from the times we've, the few times we've met, you know, you're here to, you're here to work, and it shows, and we're excited, I mean, you've got a plan, I mean, like, you haven't been here that long, and you've already got this much of a plan, so, that's great news, and I think I can speak for all of us up here, we can't wait to collaborate and help in any way we can.
Excellent, excellent. That's what we need, that's the, that's the philosophy we need across the board, so happy to work with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck on the transition, the personal transition stuff.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's, that's, that's all good, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so we will go back to our public hearing. I hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM, ordering set honors to show cause as to why the structures on said property should not be condemned. Again, if you have any of these items to speak on, please fill out a blue slip in the back and bring it to Ms. Wallace up here. Item 1A, 7479 Gulf Highway, Lake Charles, Mr. Crane.
Yes, Mr. President, we're asking for another deferral on this for 30 days. My staff has been working with this particular group, and they, they've actually submitted their scope of work and everything, and so, we're trying to get them permitted, they've submitted a request for the permit, and they're doing their submittals at this point. So, we think within 30 days, they should be able to get all this done.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have they mowed the grass and picked up the trash? 'Cause they don't need a big plan to do that.
We, have they done that? Yes, Mr. Robinson said yes.
Oh, they have? Well, wow, imagine that. Okay, well, that's good. We just want them to do what they supposed to do and clean it up, and if they can salvage the building, that's wonderful.
Yes, they, they've been responsive to us, so we certainly will-
Well, they were since you started the condemnation process.
Oh, yeah.
They weren't very responsive before that.
Yes, sir.
They just need a little nudge, perhaps.
Perhaps.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Robinson.
So, they were mainly less.
So, I guess I'll make a motion to, what'd you say?
For, for 30 days.
30 more days. All right.
So, you're saying they were mainly less, not more?
Correct.
Or less, it's less.
More or less.
All right, we got a motion to, to defer Mr. Landry, by Mr. Landry, and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion, any objection, that item's deferred. 1B, south of 5260 Elliott Road, Lake Charles, staff requests additional time to review ownership paperwork that was recently provided for this item, therefore, no action is necessary tonight. 1C, 5312 Elliott Road, Lake Charles, again, staff requests additional time to review ownership paperwork that was recently provided for this item, therefore, no action is needed tonight. Right?
1D, Mr. Lewis.
1D, no, my, my screen just went. 5352 Elliott Road, Lake Charles.
Motion to condemn and remove in 30 days.
I got a motion to condemn by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any questions, any discussion? That item carries. 1E, 7649 and 7838 Long Yon Road, Bell City.
Move to condemn and remove in 30 days.
I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Landry. Any questions, any objection, that item carries. 1F, 1255 Dunn Ferry Road, Sulphur.
Move to.
Second.
Deem and remove.
Motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Again, if anyone has, excuse me, anything to say about any of these items, please fill out a blue slip and let us know. 1H, 415 Freiter Road, Mossville, Mr. Crane, please.
Um, I think it's 1G.
1G, you need to-
Just get 1G.
69, 1G, 6933 Willis Morrow Road, Carlos.
Move to condemn and-
I can move.
Thank you, Mr. Markantel, we have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 1H, 415 Freiter Road, Mr. Crane.
Yes, Mr. President, on this one, we're requesting another 30-day extension or deferment on this one. My staff is working with their engineer, they're submitting an engineer report for this structure, and they've been in communication with them, so they needed a little bit more time to-
Move to defer for 30 days, per staff's request.
Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to defer 30 days, seconded by Mr. Quinn, any discussion, any objection, that item is deferred. 1I, 4017 South Begless Parkway, Sulphur.
Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Bowers and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont, any discussion, any objections, item carries. 3A, adopt a resolution approving a permanent utility servitude agreement for the East Calcasieu Parish Consolidated Waterworks District. Motion by Mr. Guillory, second by Mr. Smith, any discussion, any objection, item carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction servitude agreement for the East Calcasieu Parish Consolidated Waterworks dis, uh, project. I've got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion, any objection, item carries. 3C, adopt a resolution approving the renewal of a cooperative endeavor agreement for the 2025 through 2028 Calcasieu Parish Local Coastal Program. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Barti, any, any discussion, any question, any objection, item carries. 3D, adopt an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury-
Second.
-the state of Louisiana and the Road Home Corporation for the Restore Louisiana Homeowner Program, solution for voluntary acquisition and buyout program. I've got a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Bowers, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 4A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated May 8, 2025, motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Ms. Eason, any discussion, any objection, item carries. 4B, approve the Ways and Means Committee report dated June 5th, 2025, Mr. Abshire.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee of the police jury met at 5:00 PM today, June 5th, to recognize a number of local athletes and their coaches. The St. Louis Catholic High School boys golf team received certificates of recognition for their 2025 LHSAA Division II state championship. The Sam Houston High School softball team received certificates of recognition for their 2025 LHSAA Division I state championship, and the Sam Houston High School baseball team received certificates of recognition for their 2025 LHSAA Division I state championship. This is the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move to accept.
Second.
Got a motion to accept the report by Mr. Abshire, seconded by Mr. Quinn, any discussion?
Go Broncos.
Any objection? Border line out of order. One more out. I've always wanted to, that item carries. All right, so-
4C.
4C, adopt an ordinance approving the relocation of precinct numbers 661 and 662, 108 Markantel Road to Quincy, from 4775 Highway 27 to Quincy. We got a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 4D, adopt an ordinance approving the relocation of precinct number, numbers 663 and 664 to 3533 Highway 27 Sulphur from 1617B Holbrook Road Sulphur. Motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 4E, adopt a resolution allowing capital area finance authority to offer a bond program to citizens purchasing homes in southwest Louisiana.
I'll move.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Landry, moved on that, and Ms. Abshire for a second. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 4F, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Joint Services Agreement between the police jury and the city of Lake Charles for joint use, maintenance, and operation of the Calcasieu Emergency Response Training Center. Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Bowers, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 4G, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Joint Services Agreement between the police jury on behalf of Ward 3 Fire Protection District Number 2 and the city of Lake Charles for administering fire protection services. Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Lewis, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 5A, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a grant application to the state of Louisiana, Department of Children and Family Services for participation in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, moved by Mr. Guillory and seconded by Mr. Barti, Mr. Guillory.
Yes, I know we approve a lot of things, and I just wanted Ms. Erica to come up and give like a 45-minute speech. No, like a one-minute, just quick to say what this program is about. Why did I get so many eyes when I said 45 minutes?
Name and position of the.
Erica Garrison, Assistant Director for the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury, Human Services Department. So with the SNAP ENT program, this is essentially for individuals who are receiving SNAP benefits. They can connect to our program, and we work with them to provide access to different types of training, whether it's CNA work or things of that nature, to receive a certification, where they can then go and apply for a higher-paying wage job and get off of benefits essentially. So it's a way for them to achieve economic stability.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Erica.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Mr. Gilery moved for that, and then Mr. Barti seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? That item does carry. 6A, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances, condemnation of buildings and structures. Motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 6B, adopt a resolution accepting Magnolia Point subdivision located off of Foster Brothers Road and Navajo Trail in Ward 5. I've got a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7A, approve payment of all current invoices. Mr. Andrew Pont moved to pay the bills, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7B, advertise for bids for Bellfield Ditch multi-road crossing replacement project. I've got a motion by Mr. Quinn, second by Mr. Markantel. Any discussion? Any question? Any objection? That item carries. 7C, adopt a resolution on proposals for the Official Journal. Staff recommends the proposal of the American Press in the amount of $6 per inch per insertion date be accepted. Motion by Mr. Bowers and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7D, adopt a resolution on bids for the ground storage tank repair project. Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Eason. Staff recommends the lowest responsive bid of Maguire Iron in the amount of $243,000 be accepted. Again, motion by Mr. Smith and Ms. Eason, second. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7E, adopt a resolution on bids for the Allen August Center Parking and Pavement, Paving Improvements Project. Motion by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Gilery. Staff recommends a low bid of Pat Williams Construction in the amount of $443,000 be accepted. Any discussion? Any objections? That item carries. Adopt a resolution on bids for the paving and exterior improvements at various Calcasieu Parish Libraries Project. Staff recommends rejecting all bids due to budgetary constraints and request permission to readvertise with a revised scope of work. So that's what we're going to do, Mr. Quinn.
That is a motion.
Motion for that, and seconded by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 7G, adopt a resolution on proposals for a one-stop operator for the American Job Center. Staff recommends the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury's Human Services Department be accepted. Moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7H, adopt a resolution on bids for the West Calcasieu Parish Road Rehabilitation. Staff recommends a low bid of RE height construction in the amount of $2,116,035.37 be accepted. Moved by Mr. Bowers and seconded by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7I, adopt a resolution on bids for the Intracoastal Park Boat Launch Parking and Pavement Improvements Project. Staff recommends the low bid of Gunter Construction in the amount of $323,426.84 be accepted. Motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Adopt a resolution on bids for the East Calcasieu Parish Road and Drainage Rehabilitation. Staff recommends a low bid of RE height construction in the amount of $2,1587.68. Motion by Ms. Eason, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7K, adopt a resolution on bids for McCown Road Bridge Repair Project.
I'll move.
Second.
Staff recommends a low bid of CMA construction in the amount of $187,168 be accepted. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 7L, action on bids for one 2025 or newer small cargo van. Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford in the amount of $47,698 be accepted. Please let the record reflect that I am recusing myself from this vote.
Move on 7L.
But we got a motion by Mr. Markantel, a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 7M, adopt a resolution accepting Gum Cove Bridge Replacement Project as substantially complete.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 7N, adopt a resolution accepting Thoroughfare Road Rehabilitation as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 8, 8A, Calcasieu Parish Public Safety Communications District, Mr. Andy Ardwan.
Move on 8A.
Ms. Eason moves to appoint Mr. Lloyd Miller. Yes?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objections? That item carries. 8B, Community Center.
Move to appoint Mr. Rocky Prince.
Playground District Number 2 of Ward 4, Mr. Mike Boyett. We got a motion by Mr. Bowers to appoint Mr., I've got to read this. To appoint Mr. Roger Rocky Prince. I've known him all my life. So we got a motion by Mr. Bowers. I'm never going to call him Roger. And a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? I would like to thank Mr. Boyett for his time on the, on the rec board. He did a, he was a great member, and he did, he did some things for, for, for the other programs other than the usual, you know, the football, the, I mean, he was, he was a, a good friend to that board. Mr. Andrew Pont?
I echo those same comments, Mr. President. He was very engaged. It brought a business activity to it aspect, if you will. And like you say, the other activities that SPAR offers, he was, he was a solid board member, and I agree.
I served with Mike, and he did, he did great work with the golf course. He was always up there, he was, he always had the golf course at the forefront of his mind, and that's one of the reasons that, that, that Frash Golf Course is thriving right now.
Thank you. Any objections to this? Roger Prince has been appointed. 8C, Chenault International Airport Authority, Mr. Nora Papillon. We're going to reappoint per Mr. Gilery and seconded by Mr. Lewis. I love Nora. Papillon. Papillon. Yeah, not pop, yeah, pop. So, okay, any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 8D, Recreation District.
Move to defer for 30 days.
Number 1 of Ward 4, Mr. Curtis Alexander. Mr. Bowers moves to defer for 30 days, and Mr. Markantel seconds. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion deferred. 8E, Ward 6 Fire Protection District Number 1, Ms. Sarah McDaniel. Mr. Markantel would like to defer for 30 days and seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? That item is deferred. 8F, Water Works District Number 10 of Ward 7, Mr. Thor McKay. Mr. Bowers requests to defer for 30 days and seconded by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? Item is deferred. 8G.
Move to approve all.
Workforce Development Board, 1, Ms. Randy Wetstein. 2, Dr. David LaFarg. 3, Mr. Burton East. 4, Mr. Harold Beard. 5, Mr. Courtney Jacob. 6, Ms. Michelle McKinnis. 7, Dr. Wendy Palermo. 8, Mr. Christopher Ospon. 9, Ms. Jacqueline Costley Reveille. We're going to.
Mr. President, just to make it easier, I think the motion was to move as reflected on the agenda.
Okay, so.
Second on all.
All right, so, okay, 10, Ms. Rebecca Coward, and 11, Mr. James Fielder. 9 was appoint Ms. Mary Bishop, and 11 was appoint Ms. Christian Ogden. Moved by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. 9 is board advise items, 10 is an advise item.